Going to call the Tampa City Council Meeting Evening Session, Public Hearing to Order, Real Call.
Suarez.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
President.
Miranda.
Here.
Vera.
Here.
And Reddick.
All right, can we get a motion up for opening, public? We got a motion, a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, settled by Mr. Miranda, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose. All right, we got item one through ten, if you going to speak on any of those items, please stand and be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, we got any house cleaning on this?
Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination, we're ready to proceed with all the agendas.
All right, let me start at number one.
Mary Saminiego, item number one is REZ 18101, it's a rezoning request for the property located at 414 and 418 East Emily Street from RM 16 to plan development for our congregate living facility.
Good evening, council members, David Haye with your planning commission staff. I have been sworn, we start the evening off in the central Tampa Planning District, more specifically the Tampa Heights neighborhood. There is transit within that area, the Metro Rabbit, Route One and Route Six all service the site, the property is not within an evacuation zone, and Robles Park is the closest public recreation facility to the subject site. Onto the aerial, the subject site is right here, this is East Emily Street, this is Robles Park to the south, of course Interstate 275 further to the east, you've got the Robles Park Village apartment complex kind of to the north and west of the subject site, the area is predominantly single-family detached away from that development, there is some duplexes scattered throughout and some older multifamily, then you get the commercial corridor along North Florida Avenue to the west. Onto the future land use map, it's kind of hard to see because it's covered up, but the subject site is Residential 20, which is the same color as over here to the east, just to the north and west is the Residential 35 in that darker brown, the green represents the recreation open space, and then the single-family detached is predominantly in that Residential 10, future land use category, the red represents the community commercial 35, future land use category. The applicant is requesting approval through this rezoning petition to allow construction of that congregate living facility, it is the intent of the city's plan to provide housing opportunities for the elderly, disabled, and other special classes of persons and other groups protected by the American Disabilities Act in single multiple congregate living facilities. The plan also encourages the expansion supply of housing that is accessible to people with disabilities. Tampa Comprehensive Plan also through development incentives, incentivizes the development of congregate living facilities throughout the city of Tampa. Overall, staff found the proposed rezoning consistent with the provisions of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Mary Saminiego again for the record, here is the subject property in green, it creates like its own small block in effect, here's Central Avenue, Emily Street, Avon, and then the small James Street to the north. As I stated, this is going to be a congregate living facility, there are two existing structures on site that will be rehabilitated to facilitate the use, and then one of the structures will be added on to. Here is one of the existing structures that will be rehabilitated, here's the other second structure that obviously will be rehabilitated, remodeled, and then added on to, I'll indicate that on the site plan. Here's the park across the street, here's a view down Emily, here's the housing on either side of the property, and then again the park across the street, across Emily. The applicant is proposing 150-bed maximum congregate living facility, large group care. Here is their proposed site plan. This is the pink house that we saw in the pictures, that will be used for some of the beds in some of the facility, here is the other multiple-story building that we saw that will be added on to, and the whole thing, well, we're kind of like as a campus, so both buildings, the larger building and the existing building will facilitate the maximum 150 beds that they were proposing. The entire site is .8 acres, it is a planned development, the only use they are proposing is congregate living facility, large group care. There are no waivers being requested as part of this application, there are some changes between first and second reading that staff is recommending for natural, I'm sorry, for solid waste and land development coordination. Overall, staff did find this consistent with the land development code with those modifications. Several days after the staff report came out, the applicant notified me that they had been working with the Neighborhood Association, and they had come to some agreements to changes to the site plan, so the applicant will make his presentation and then anticipate asking for a continuance for months to incorporate some of those elements that they had agreed upon with the Neighborhood Association into our revised site plan, but we wanted to open up for public comment today. Do you have any questions for me?
Joseph Berklemyer for the developer, the applicant, and I'm here on behalf of the developer. As Ms. Saminiego stated, we came to an agreement Tuesday with the Civic Association, I'm sure they're going to get up and speak as presidents here, as to what changes they were requesting to the site plan in accommodation to those requests, we have to make some major changes to the site plan, which we'll go back through staff, and we'll see you back in March, I'm really here to answer any questions you might have before or after public comment.
So are you requesting that this, once the neighborhood make their comments, are you requesting that this be continued to another date? Is that sparring?
Yes, staff is required, based on the type of changes we're making, that they're going to require 30 days to review these changes to the site plan, so we will be continued post-public comment to next month.
All right, staff, do you have a suggested date on 30 days?
Yes, sir, the next, we should be available at the next hearing at March 14th.
March 14th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
If I could, before, before we hear from the public, what are the proposed changes that have been brought forth, and so that we make sure that what they're going to tell us is in agreement with what you're telling us?
So the two major changes are the setbacks as currently displayed, and we're going to have to run those back through staff because we're not sure if those are compliant with the code.
Sure.
But that's what they're asking for, and we said we'd do that if subject to staff review, and a reduction in the density are the two primary changes to the site plan itself, 87 beds will be the reduction in density from the prior request of 150 with commensurate changes to the parking plan.
Okay.
And then the other piece that's not a change to the site plan, but it's an agreement between the association and the developer is, the developer is willing to comply from an appearance standpoint with the Tampa Heights historic guidelines that are promulgated for the historic part of the district, he's going to make the facades, elevations, those type of things comply with the historic standards.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
All right, anyone in the public who should speak on item number one?
Good afternoon, Owen Young, 3407 Jefferson Street, Tampa, Florida. As a proud resident of Tampa Heights community for over 35 years, we have major concerns with the property development located at 414, 418 Emily Street in Tampa Heights. There was an agreement of modification while noble falls short of the expectation, as residents of the north side of Tampa Heights, the agreement of modification was sent by the Tampa Heights Civic Association to the developer. Conversely, as residents of the north side of Tampa Heights, where the development is actually happening, we totally disagree with the, with the agreement of modification and the project as a whole. Concerns that we have, to name a few, the current way of work, the upkeep, the unkept grounds at the site doesn't, doesn't suggest that it will be the quality of facility that we want in our community. If this is an indicator of what is yet to come, as residents, we are concerned. The number of projected beds per square foot presented by the attorney for the project represents a dormitory-style facility with multi-use bathrooms for the elderly. This leaves the community to wonder, what will the quality of life be for the elderly and the veterans that uses this facility? The park is located across the street from the facility, the park is used as a recreation outlet for many of our community members and which we welcome, however, it often causes major traffic congestion around the park, what happens when there's a medical emergency, and a first responder cannot access the entrance to the facility in a timely manner. Oftentimes, there are police helicopters patrolling the area in the wee hours of the morning, sometimes flying for hours in between the AM hours of 12 and 4 in the morning. The sound and vibration from the helicopters can be felt through our homes, what does that say for this facility, for our elderly and our veterans? Our celebrated veterans, in which many suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, also known to us as PTSD, will not benefit from this facility at all. This cannot be a good thing for their mental health and the quality of life. As a community, we, we struggle ourselves with the noise pollution produced from the patrolling helicopters and from the interstate. These are just several of the many questions that we have as a community, as a community, we are strongly recommending that further discussion be held on the feasibility of this type of development in our community, and a hold to this project happens immediately. Thank you.
Justin Ricky, Tampa Heights Civic Association, president, my address is 103 East 26th Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33603. When we are charting our destinations for the future, we oftentimes use past experiences as guides to know where we have been, what has been done, and what knowledge from past learnings we may use to help us mold the future. I am the belief that this thought process is applicable when you look at a neighborhood and how you envision its future development as a resident. As a decade-long resident of Tampa Heights, I've been through the metamorphosis that has taken place in our neighborhood, our riverfront CRA has been transformative and had an exponential impact on our community development. The forward-thinking ideas and movement towards something that pushes not just our neighborhood, but our city as a whole to new levels is what we should aspire to achieve. We all remember what the riverfront looked like before the CRA, that's where we were. Our future today looks dramatically different. As a Neighborhood Civic Association, we, we feel like this should be the way we look at all developments across our entire community, not just along our riverfront. We want to be inspired, we want to see signs of innovation, signs of advancement, signs of moving and progressing towards a vision that makes people want to choose Tampa Heights as a place to live, work, and play. When the developer of this project came before us, we know that this is somewhere we have been before, it is neither, neither progressive or new. The project developer is seeking to put into place, has been attempted in Tampa Heights before, we are here again, and is not, for lack of better, for better terms, breaking the mold. The Civic Association understands that there is no jurisprudence for rejecting the developer's plan, the developer has taken the initiative to meet with us as a community, and has asked us for input in regards to what we, what would make their project amenable for our community. As a Neighborhood Association, this was appreciated, as an association, we have chosen to neither oppose or support the applicant's petition during this hearing. We ask that council review our agreement with the applicant, and if approved, hold the developer accountable to their agreement with the Neighborhood Association. I would also like to use this opportunity to share the opinion that Tampa Heights is in dire need of some type of form-based or transit-oriented development code that can help guide developers of the future. The longer we wait for this guidance, the more these issues will continue to dominate your docket, meanwhile, we jeopardize capitalizing on opportunities to create world-class neighborhoods for our children to inherit. I appreciate your time, wisdom, and consideration in these matters, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Barnes, I'm a service-connected disabled veteran, my address is 5318 36th Avenue, Circle West, apartment U2, Bradenton, Florida. I work as a consultant with the applicant, and the idea and the desire of building a facility that's capable of housing and helping veterans like myself is in dire need in the area. It's great because it's located and co-located to veteran facilities like the James A. Haley Hospital and other required help places for the veterans. It also helps revalue and revitalize the location of where it's at currently, being that there's a park across the street. Now, when I first came and did a site survey and looked at the, looked at the lot as they were building, and looking at all the options they had, I had made some critiques and some options to help the applicant's doing his very best to meet everybody's requests, but I'm just here on behalf to push for the build, because it could definitely help the veterans in the area. Being a service-disabled veteran, I know what it's like to need all of these requests and help, to go to the VA to get services, specifically with PTSD. Now, the location is needing some love, I can agree with everybody on that, but I would like for everybody to consider the option that it could be something for the veterans that this country has tried to help and is working to get better at helping. That's all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, board, my name is Casey Bowick, I'm the CEO of the Tampa Bay Black Chamber of Commerce, 3302 North Jefferson Street, and the chamber is here today in support of the project that is going on over, is going to be going on over on Emily over there, because we feel, and we have discussed this, that something of this sort is needed in the area for the seniors, for the veterans, to be housed somewhere where they can be, instead of being way out somewhere, they can be closer to their families and things, and, and, and what they, they spoke about, about the yard and everything and stuff, when things get done around there, I'm sure the yard will be kept clean and, and everything and, and stuff, and we are here today to support this and to approve this as far as the chamber goes, and we would like for the board to consider approving this and supporting this, because this, once again, is something that is valuable and needed for our seniors and for the veterans that are coming out and, and that are out, and to be taken care of in that sense. And with that, I say to you, good evening, and to continue having a wonderful Valentine, and remember, learning from the past to create the future. May God bless.
Good evening.
Before you start.
Yes, sir.
If you plan on speaking, and you're able to stand against the wall, please do so, because the numbers keep dwindling down, and then someone pop up and go stand up over there, we need to know where we're at.
Yes, sir, good evening, my name is Shane Thorson, I'm a local businessman, former professional athlete, who is now very involved in the athletic field here in the Tampa Bay area. The purpose for my visit here today, it's not so much to push for the, push for the location, but to actually push for veterans. I have a number of veterans that I've trained with after their active service or active duty, I have a number of friends that I grew up with that are involved in the military, and have come back from active service and active duty. My purpose tonight is to make the board aware that there's an average of 20 veterans that commit suicide per day, and whether it's the location, whether it's city code, whether it's decision of the council, again, my purpose here is to push for veterans and their ability, their opportunity to have correct housing. I would imagine that, given the board's opportunity to make a decision along with the rules and regulations of the city and the ordinances, that there would be a way to find and meet an agreement to be able to have this, excuse me, this facility be permissible in its location. I hope that the board rules in favor of this, because, to be fair, veterans need this opportunity, elders need this opportunity. I appreciate the, the time and the, the ears of the board, and I wish you all well, thank you.
How you doing, folks? My name is James Shepherd, I am a veteran who struggles with PTSD and a number of other issues, that when I first got out, after receiving help at the VA, I was discharged, and had it not been for friends, basically extending their home to me, I would have been homeless. Having a facility like this for somebody who, maybe they, they don't have that network available to them, it would be priceless. Being able to have that stability, having a roof over your head, having that sense of pride, instead of having that negative aura above you at all times, that you're less than, because you can't seem to just get that basic need of shelter, having something like this can help, approving something like this, allowing this developer to help people who have sacrificed a lot. I, I don't understand why this would be an issue, why there wouldn't be people clamoring to support this and to help figure out what exactly needs to be done, can be done to make this an easier process, this shouldn't be difficult. I mean, as was stated before, we have a number of individuals every day, 22 a day, and it's rising, friends of mine, who felt like they were just animals or disposable, because we can't, for whatever reason, have a basic necessity of life. You know, we might be resourceful, we might be able to come up with something that, that can get us through, but be able to have that basic need, that takes one less thing off of our plate, allows us to feel human. Not feeling human is something I struggled with for years. This could help, I thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, thank you for another opportunity to come before you, I'm Lena Young Green, and I live at 3406 North Avon Avenue. There is nobody who has spoken to you so far that lives as close to this facility as I have, for almost 40 years. Because of being there as long as we have, I could tell you what the history is, someone mentioned about past experiences being an indication of future, we have had a facility like this at this location, that 40414 address in the past. It took us years and years of fighting a facility like this in order to get that removed from our community. The impact that facilities like this have in our neighborhood is very, very devastating. It's funny that a few months ago, we were here with the Civic Association, asking you not to approve such a facility down on the north side of our community. Now we're talking about one up on the, down on the south side, now we're talking about one on the north side, and we're in different places, it's no different, it's no different. Tampa Heights is overloaded with facilities that provide services, we are not opposed to that, I said back then at that hearing, that we had nothing against veterans, my family are veterans, people who are close to us are veterans, we are not fighting a veterans issue, we are fighting to develop a community that has been for years and years devastated by all of the past activities that Tampa Heights have suffered, suffered with. We're talking about an area that when I opened my door, I looked to my left, and that's the facility there, and behind it, we deal every day with 35 acres of public housing, and we are working with the Tampa Housing Authority to improve that area, and finally, we are at the point where we think we are going to be able to help them move, be able to develop that area. I have three minutes from Kareem, may I have that?
Normally, the process is that you have to turn it in before you start speaking.
Okay.
And, and, so you didn't do that.
Okay, we didn't know that you had, we thought we handed it in after I started speaking.
You had to do it before.
But that's what we are dealing down on, on the north side of Tampa Heights, you can't add 150 beds in less than an acre to another area that has 35 acres of over 1,000 public housing, what fairness is that? We got to improve all of our neighborhood, we talk about the, we talk about the hole in the doughnut, and that's what's happening in North Tampa Heights, please don't approve this request.
Next person.
Good afternoon, my name is Lionel Potts, and I might have been out of work for two years, working off and on, and I worked for this guy who got me off the streets, Mr. Mohammed, he got me off the streets, got me good and going, and with this project, I can take care of my family now, and with this project, it can help a whole lot of other families, you know what I'm saying? And, and we can progress from there, and it's be good for the community, I'm also work for, you know, other companies, and right now, everything would be good, and I stand behind it 100%. Thank you.
I wish to speak, but I have not been sworn in.
All right.
I didn't stand and raise my hand, I wish to speak now if I may be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm the truth, the whole truth, the whole truth?
I do. Good evening, folks, councilman, my name is McIntosh, I live on Emily Street, I live at 512 Emily Street, I'm the closest house to 275. The address that this man is looking to redo has been an eyesore for five years, we bought, we bought five years ago, basically this month, it has been a horrible place with nothing but drugs, with homeless, with litter, it's just been atrocious. He has come in, and the man was just before me, has done a marvelous job on the improvements that the building has gone through to this point. I'm not sure about the setbacks that were mentioned earlier, may I continue?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I'm not sure about the setbacks, that's all a code issue, I'm not sure, the amount that was requested at 150 is too high for the location, 87 is an acceptable number, and I would like to see the project go through, so I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Okay, applicant? Before, before you start speaking, let me ask you a question, did you meet with the Civic Association?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Okay, so you met with that group as well? Okay, go ahead.
I can brief, very briefly give you the background of that, we met originally with the Civic Association, we'd reached out to them when this project came up, and we filed for the PD, met with them three times since December, the applicant, developer had written a very long letter explaining what he was trying to do, what he was trying to get accomplished, with a lot of the details of the project, to include some of the bed counts. to include some of the bed counts, some of the requirement, you know, the requirements of ACA with the state as far as density, those type of things. And has reached out three times since then to meet with them, and thus the agreement that we've come to with the Civic Association. I know Mr. Ricky had said the agreement. I don't think that's going to be enforceable. It's up to the city attorney, obviously. But the developer fully intends to comply with the commitments that he's made. That's why we're, you know, here tonight, and I'm happy to put that into the record if need be. So.
All right. Any questions from council?
If I could, Chair, so since we're going to go to continuance anyway, we're going to have to come back, and it's going to be a PD, and there are going to be requirements that are part of any kind of PD that comes forward. I think the discussion and the issue was that there may have been people from the, the association that represented the southern part of the association and not the northern part. I think that was part of the issue. And I'm not sure if Ms. Green Young had known about the reduction of, of the homes, or, I mean, excuse me, the beds, and whether or not that was, you know, talked about at that time, or if it was with Mr. Ricky, who was representing the other part of the association. That's the only confusing part I've got on all this. I mean, because we're hearing, we're hearing from two different community leaders that we know, and we have two different, you know, opinions about it. So that's, that's where we're a little confused.
Yes, sir. Totally agree. Ms. Green is a member at large of the Executive Committee of the Tampa Civic Association. She was at the meeting, she was at the meeting for all the discussions, certainly eligible to voice her opinion, which I'm quite sure she did when we were not in the room. And again, it's a matter of, the history doesn't necessarily dictate the future, which I get her concerns. I think Mr. Mohammed gets her concerns, and Ms. Begdory gets her concerns. And that's what we're looking to address by reaching out to them and saying, hey, look, we're willing to comply, willing to do, make something work. I had asked a number of times during the meetings as to exactly what they wanted there, if they didn't want an assisted living facility. What we were given an option of was multifamily. With the current situation in that area, the multifamily rents will not support the development of the facilities as they want to see them. The assisted living facility will. And what Mr. Begdory is intending to do is build something that is looking three to five years down the future, when that community area is redeveloped, to be fit in with that community as opposed to the way it sits today.
Yeah. I would, I would make the suggestion that after seeing some of the feedback, that you make sure you, you do meet with, with her and some of the members of the people that live in that particular part of Tampa Heights to understand what, what's going on. You know, go the extra mile, because it's always important. Obviously, if you're going to come back here in a month, I think it would help you understand what some of the concerns are. And I'm not sure what the plan's going to look like when it comes back. That's up to you, and, and then we'll make a decision based on whatever you come back to us with. So with that, Chair, unless there's anything else, I want to make sure, though, that are we going to have any additional ability for folks to speak at the next hearing, since it's going to be a brand-new, a brand-new plan?
They could speak to the changes, if council's pleasure. They can speak to, you could give them another opportunity, but they certainly have the right to speak to any changes that are brought back for council's consideration.
Yeah, I'd, I'd wish that we would give broad leeway, only because we, we have a completely different plan that was brought to us, whole and brand-new to us. You know, we didn't know that this was going to be brought up before in the continuance. So hopefully, that, I'm not sure in terms of making sure that the neighborhood knows too, and whether or not we have the ability to have them send out another notice or not. So.
They are not, they are not required to send out another notice.
We would be happy to do so.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
The notice of, the notice of the continuance date is what you're saying.
Yes, sir. Happy to do so. And to your point, we've been more than happy to reach out. And again, the Executive Committee is the way we've reached out. Mr. Begdory's offered to show up at the general meeting of the Neighborhood Association. So we're certainly willing to work for the community to try to make as many accommodations as we can within a responsible development process.
All right. So any other comments, questions from, for me to accept a motion from Mr. Miranda?
I second Mr. Miranda's motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this meeting to March fourteenth at six o'clock of year, twenty-nine second.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, seconded by Mr. Corn, and a further discussion on the motion. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? All right. And if there's a Navy Civic Association meeting or Neighborhood Association meeting between nine and fourteen, I would hope you will attend and try to hammer out this.
Yes, sir. We have, we've certainly offered, and we're willing to do so.
Okay.
The one thing is, the hearing is open, so you can't talk to us about it during the next meeting.
Absolutely understand that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Out of number two.
Mary Saminiego, out of number two, is REZ eighteen-one-twenty-one. It's a rezoning request for the property at seven-one-one-three South Kissimmee Street from CG to RS fifty.
Good evening, council members. David Hay with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn. We move down to the South Tampa Planning District for this next case, more specifically the Port Tampa City neighborhood. Since it is down there, it is within the coastal high hazard area. There's also transit down there. Hart Street seventeen serves that portion of the city. Since it is in the coastal high hazard area, it is in an evacuation zone A. And public recreation facilities within a half-mile radius of the site include the southwest Port Tampa Park and the Doster Community Center. Onto an aerial, here's the subject site. This is a zoomed out. Mary will probably have a closer in. You can see the street pattern. This portion of Kissimmee that the street is on is mostly vacant on the west side, and mostly duplexes and multifamily on the west side. And this is Commerce Street heading up, and then up toward West Shore. This right here is the Port Tampa Library Building. But you could see, Port Tampa's been filling in with a lot of single-family, new single-family detached, south of the subject site. And also, this site, this right here is the West Shore Elementary School, just to give you some context. Onto the future land use map. It's hard to see, but the subject site and all that kind of pink color, lavender, I guess, is the community mixed-use thirty-five. Just to the south and to the west of the site in this light gray, that's all some light industrial. Further south down Kissimmee, there is a pocket of residential thirty-five. And then you've got residential twenty. And then this area is all that single-family detached under the residential ten. Your Planning Commission staff has looked at it. The plan encourages the development and redevelopment of new houses on vacant infill or underutilized lands. At present, the parcel is vacant and undeveloped. Proposed rezoning is deemed appropriate infill development under that community mixed-use thirty-five, future land use category. It does fall within that coastal high hazard area. Therefore, the applicant must ensure that the proposed residential development will not have any negative impacts on hurricane evacuation time, routes, and shelter demands in case of a hurricane or natural disaster. Overall, the proposed residential development is comparable and compatible to that existing residential development pattern within this portion of Port Tampa City. And based on that, Planning Commission staff finds the request consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Saminiego, for the record. The subject property is in green. As you can see, it is in the commercial general zoning district. As David stated, this is an area that was industrial. However, they did a conference of plan amendment to convert it out of the industrial land use category into community mixed-use thirty-five. Now the applicant is requesting to change the property from commercial general zoning over to RS fifty to allow for a single-family detached residential development. Here is the subject property. It's currently vacant, property decided, and residential development, with some apartments across the street and single-family houses. So there's a mix of residential development already occurring in the immediate area. The subject property is a little over ten thousand square feet. Per the RS fifty zoning standards, each lot would have to be fifty by one hundred and five thousand square feet. And any development that was to occur would be required to comply with the RS fifty zoning standards. This is Euclidian rezoning, so there's no waivers allowed, and there's no site plan to submit. The Development Review Compliance Staff found this consistent with the Land Development Code.
All right. Any question from council? The applicant?
I'm Lou Thoth. I'm the applicant. I'm here to answer any question you guys have.
Any question for the applicant?
Excuse me?
No, I'm asking my members up here.
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone in the public wish to speak on item number two? All right. Some, some people come in.
My name is Callie Denno. I'm with the Port Tampa Civic, Port Tampa Civic Association. For this particular rezoning, we do ask that you consider keeping it commercial general. There are a couple other commercial general lots around the Port Tampa area where I think it makes sense to rezon them as residential. But this one is also around an area where there are some other commercial facilities there. A lot of them are both storage places. And as pointed out on the map, the library is close there. Port Tampa does continue to be filled in with both residential housing and a lot of apartments. As we gain more people and citizens, we don't have businesses to go to. We are four steps north, where it's also infilling with a lot of people. There's a lot of change around Tampa, which we support, but we would like to keep some of our businesses down there in Port Tampa, so that our quality of life remains consistent with everyone else coming in. There's, like I said, there's a lot of development down there, and we support that. But with this being commercial, we would like to either keep it commercial or even entertain the idea of mixed use. A little bit of apartments and businesses, so that we kind of have a win for everybody, and we can come to an agreement on this. Thank you for your consideration.
Hello, City Council. My name is Jeffrey Natupski. I am the new president of the Gandy Civic Association. I'm following in Al Steenson's footsteps. Much like Al got involved, I'm going to get involved as well. Mr. Thoth, on, on your plan for McCoy, I'm going to ask City Council to consider, I don't know the appropriate terminology, but push this back or to give us some more time for the developer to meet with the neighborhood civic associations. I am not sure if you had a chance to do that yet, and I'll make sure, you know, we talk. Here's the situation. Development, good, apartments, townhomes, condos, I'm indifferent. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, I'm also a real estate broker, so I understand the developments of the neighborhoods. Here's the problem. I live down in the neighborhood. If I'm hungry, I have nowhere to eat. If I want to go buy something, there's nowhere to shop. We are developing south of Gandy at a rapid rate, which is great. More taxable income, the neighborhood looks better. However, for instance, Nick, who, Nick Cruz, who owns...
Big Rays.
Big Rays Fish Camp. He wants to open up another location in south of Gandy, but on the west side of Del Maru. There's nowhere to do it. Up and down West Shore, there's only a few remaining parcels in which we might have an opportunity to bring some restaurants in. We might have the opportunity to put some shopping in. We have tens of thousands of folks who are living in the area. However, we don't have any small businesses for these, these citizens to, you know, go into. What I'm going to ask Mr. Thoth and, you know, City Council, if perhaps there is an alternative for a mixed use on this parcel. Maybe we can have a little bit of shopping. Maybe we can have some places for the small businesses, the entrepreneurs, to be able to come in and, and have something to do with their neighborhood. The issue is, a lot of folks are upset about the development. I'm not. I think it's great for the neighborhood. I'm upset that we don't have anywhere to eat, we don't have anywhere to go and shop and spend our money. What apartments do for neighborhoods, I got an understanding. They bring a lot of people in, which brings a lot of extra disposable income to spend at the local businesses. The more people in the neighborhood, the more businesses we have, the more entrepreneurs who want to create businesses. We don't have anywhere for these businesses to get created. Nowhere for them to get established. So my request on behalf of the Gandy Civic Association, Callie spoke on behalf of the Port Tampa Civic Association, is to perhaps delay or give us some more time for Mr. Thoth, the developer of this project, to meet with the appropriate civic associations in the neighborhood, to see if we can, you know, come to some common ground and, you know, put something together that benefits everybody in the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak on item number two? You got a question?
I'll wait till that.
Okay. The applicant? You got time to respond. You respond to what you heard here tonight.
I, I really don't know how to respond.
Put the light on. Put the light, okay. All right. Go ahead. State your name and respond.
I'm Lou Thoth. I'm the applicant. And I really don't know how to respond, because we residential builders in the same area. Across the street, residential area, there is no one store, nothing like that. So if, if the folks need more time to talk, we can do that, but I don't think we're going to change our request.
Okay. Mr. Corn?
Well, I was actually going to ask if you had talked to them at all.
We had to, we had to send out what CIL required notice to the Civic Association. We didn't get anything back. I got a few phone calls I answered from, from residents around the area, but nothing else.
Mr. Thoth, you're going to, you're going to put a single-family home there. Is that what it is, or?
Actually, that's going to be two.
There's going to be two homes?
Yes, yes.
Okay. On, over there. And would you be willing to meet with the homeowner association, especially since now they've said that they have some other suggestions? Would you be willing to do that? But, see, we can't tell you what to do. You can ask us for a continuance in order for you to go talk to them, and then come back at a different date. That's up to you.
You know, first, we have to change the land use. It took, I don't even know, four, five months. Now, this is the third month in the rezoning process, so it's almost a year now. If I have to, of course I do. If you don't have to, I'd like to request approval for the rezoning.
Okay. The reason why I ask you is that if you, if you don't, sometimes when we vote, it doesn't go your way, and then you won't be able to get, you know, a change. Or if you make a decision to go forward, and maybe you meet with the neighborhood, sometimes you get something that is workable. And now, again, that's up to you as to what you want to do. You've heard what the neighborhoods had to say, and they had some different suggestions. You don't have to take their suggestions, and you don't have to ask us for a continuance. I'm asking you, based on what you've heard so far and the questions that you had, do you want to do that?
I'm willing to do.
You're willing to do that?
I'm willing to talk to the association, yes.
Okay. All right. Would you be willing to come back if I could get a date from...
March fourteenth.
March fourteenth also? Can you come back?
Oh, not March fourteenth.
Let's make sure that it's okay with the...
I believe at this point, March fourteenth is probably full. It was the last continuance. So I would say March twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth? March twenty-eighth?
It's an alcohol night, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that'd be fine. That'd be fine. So, sir, we will continue it, and you will come back on the twenty-eighth. Please make sure you talk to them, since you've asked for this continuance, and then you can come back here at that time.
All right.
Okay?
Before you do that...
Sure.
But the applicant made a statement, a comment, when he first responded, he said, even if he met with them, he saw no changes going to be made.
Right. Well, again, I don't want to, I don't want to preclude whatever discussion comes out of the, you know, that. And again, it's a matter of him being able to meet with them, and that's up to him. I mean, if he doesn't want to do it, he doesn't have to do it.
Is that your same position? That, that even if you met with them, you were not willing to change anything?
Sir, I'm representing the owner, so it's really hard to say what, what he thinks and not. So...
It might be better for him.
Okay. Entertained a motion.
He might get, he might get involved in, in the discussion, yes.
Terrific. All right. I'll make the motion that the, continue this until March twenty-eighth, I believe at six p.m.
All right. Got a motion from Mrs. Floris, seconded by Mr. Miranda, to continue this to March twenty-eighth. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Okay. Yes, sir.
And just so the public knows, there will be no additional notice sent out regarding that continuance. This is the only notice you'll be receiving for March twenty-eighth.
And if I could, I would suggest that you talk to him now, get all the information, figure out dates that you all can meet, so.
All right, item number three.
Item number three is REZ 18122. It's in the same area. It's 7701 South O'Brien Street from Industrial General to RS 50.
Evening, Councilmembers. David Hay with your planning commission staff. I have been sworn, we're still in that, the South Tampa Planning District, again, the Port Tampa City Neighborhood. There is transit like the last one. It's about a quarter of a mile to the north of the subject site. Just like the other one, it's in the Level A evacuation zone, and the closest public recreation facility is southwest Port Tampa Park, located to the west of the subject site. This is a little further south than the last one. This is the subject site right here. A lot of this is undeveloped. A lot of this is city-owned property. This is part of the park, just to the northwest of the subject site. These tanks to the south, that's MacDill Air Force Base and the boundary for the base there. But you can see the area is predominantly single-family detached. We also have some new development occurring further to the east. Here's the future land use map. It's hard to see, but the subject site is that residential 10, similar to that tan color all around. There is some scattered undeveloped, light industrial parcels all down in this area, but this area has been trending. There's been numerous plan amendments down here, bringing it to that residential 10 site. The blue is the quasi-public associated with MacDill Air Force Base. The black is actually heavy industrial. A lot of this is city-owned. A lot of it's wetlands, so even though it's industrial, it's not developed. And then you've got some natural preservation further to the west. This site, the request to rezone the subject site from that adopted industrial general zoning district, which was the old zoning, to the residential single-family 50. This will allow for comparable and compatible infill development in this southern portion of Port Tampa City Neighborhood. The proposed rezoning is deemed appropriate infill development under the residential 10, future land use category. The proposed rezoning would not alter the character of the physical development pattern of this portion of South O'Brien Street. The existing average density for residential parcels fronting this block of South O'Brien Street with a residential 10, future land use designation, and excluding the subject site, is 8.72 units per acre. If the applicant through this rezoning to RS 50 creates two developable lots, it would create a density of nine dwelling units per acre on the subject site. This portion of South O'Brien Street and the potential for two developable lots on the subject site is comparable and compatible. The property is in the coastal high hazard area, so the applicant would need to ensure through the city that the shelter demands are met and any mitigation is provided. And based on those considerations, planning commission staff finds the proposed rezoning consistent with the provisions of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination. Here's a zoning map of the property. It is in an area, it's currently zoned industrial general. They did a land use amendment, as David said. Now they're wanting again to go to RS 50 for two single-family detached residential developments. This is an area of the plan development that was approved last year, the relatively large plan development for the infill residential construction. There's the subject property, currently vacant and unused. It's across the street. That's the infrastructure and basic construction. Site clearing is occurring for that larger PD across O'Brien. Here's some of the canals. This serve the area, and then single-family houses are on the remaining lots. Again, they're requesting it to rezone to RS 50 as a residential infill project. As David indicated, this property is zoned industrial general, but it has sat vacant and not used for industrial projects for decades. And so it seems appropriate to transition it over to what the existing established character of this surrounding area, which is residential. So the applicant's requesting to go to RS 50, single-family residential, for a maximum of two lots on the 10,000 square feet. Any development that was to occur would be required to comply with the RS 50 zoning standards, and the Development Review and Compliance Staff found this consistent with the Land Development Code.
Any question from council? All right, applicant?
Good evening again. I'm Lou Thoth, here to answer any questions regarding the project.
Any question for the applicant? Anyone in the public who should speak on item number three?
Hi, Jeffrey Natupski, again. This particular redevelopment, rezoning, is not in the Gandy Civic Association's district, so I'm coming here as a private citizen. I support the idea of it. I think it's good to transition away from the industrial vacant lands we have to put in some nice new homes, so I'm in support of it. I guess my only request would be, you know, building something in there that would maintain like the structure, kind of like the characteristic of the neighborhood. So, you know, what kind of house you put on there, it'd be nice to know, but I'm fully supportive of what he wants to do, and I just wanted to show you that, you know, I'm a very reasonable person. Thank you.
Move to close.
All right, we got a motion closed from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor, let the motion say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Ms. Suarez, would you read number three?
Thank you, Chair. I present an ordinance for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 7701 South O'Brien Street, in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification IG, industrial general, to RS 50, residential, single-family, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Ms. Suarez, second by Mr. Vera. All in favor, let the motion say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? All right.
Motion carried with Kapine being abstained. Vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on March 7, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
All right, let me make a quick announcement. The council has need to go in recess for 10 minutes to take care of a matter of importance, and we will be in recess for 10 minutes, and we'll be back. Going to reconvene the meeting, a roll call?
Suarez, Cohen.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Kapine, Miranda.
Here.
Vera and Reddick.
Here. All right, go to item number four.
Mary Saminiego, item number four is REZ 18123. It's a rezoning request for 2502 West Fig Street from RM 16 to RM 18.
Good evening, Councilmembers. David Hay, planning commission staff. I have been sworn, we move back up to the central Tampa Planning District for this next case, more specifically the West Tampa Urban Village. The subject site, the closest public recreation facility is Vila Brothers Park, which is 0.17 miles to the north. There is transit provided down on Kennedy Boulevard to the south of the subject site. The subject site is in the Level D evacuation zone. Onto the area, this is the zoomed-out one. Mary will have a closer-in one. The subject site is right here. This is North Tampania Avenue and West Fig. The area has a mixture of single-family detached and townhomes in it. This is the Vila Brothers Park, and this is the Brian Glazier Jewish Community Center. Then you've got Kennedy Boulevard to the south with all that commercial and stuff down there. Onto the future land use map, the subject site and all the properties surrounding it in that brown are the residential 20. The density goes down when you move west of Havana Avenue down to residential 10. To the east, this pink is all the community mixed-use 35. That's the Jewish Community Center. It gets more intense as you go up Howard Avenue into the CC 35, future land use category. And then to the south, this kind of lavender color on Kennedy is the urban mixed-use 60, future land use category. Planning commission staff, the request is to rezone to that residential multifamily 18. We found that it would not have any adverse impacts on properties adjacent to the site. Let's see. It's within that West Tampa Urban Village. The area of the city, which has been identified in the comprehensive plan, seeks to direct the greatest share of growth. It provides diverse housing opportunities within the city of Tampa, the urban villages, and this project would allow for additional infill in an appropriate area. So based on those considerations, planning commission staff finds the proposed rezoning consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Mary Saminiego, for the record. Here's a zoning map. The subject property is in green. As you can see, the larger area in the subject property is already in the RM 16 zoning district, so they're just asking for a slight density increase to go to the RM 18 district. Several areas, there've already been some rezonings kind of in the areas for the slight increase, which is allowable, increase in density, which is allowable in the R 20 land use category. Based on lot size, it's a little over 10,500 square feet. If the rezoning were to be approved for RM 18, a total of four dwelling units, could theoretically be developed on this property. It's on the corner of Fig and Tampania. Here's the subject property. It's currently vacant. The surrounding area is a mix of single-family houses. Again, if this property were to be rezoned, all development would have to comply with the standard zoning provisions for the RM 18 zoning district. There is no site plan to submit, and there are no waivers. The Development Review and Compliance Staff found this consistent with the Land Development Code.
Any question for staff? Petition?
Good evening, Council. Steve Michelini. I'm here on behalf of the petitioners of 2502 West Fig. Basically, the staff has run through the development criteria. It's residential 20, land use classification, which allows for the consideration of the RM 18 zoning. We will have to meet the code compliance issues regarding setbacks and lot size development, things like that, as well as the West Tampa overlay district guidelines. Both the city and the planning commission staff have found it to be consistent with their codes and their review criteria. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. The lot is 10,518 square feet, and as the staff has pointed out, it would allow for the consideration of four units to be developed on this property. I respectfully request your permission to go forward and your approval.
All right, any question for council? Petition? Anyone in the public who should speak on item number four?
Hi. My first time, so I'm a rookie. I live at 2506 West Fig. My name is Joy Lee. And I didn't get a notice. I just saw the sign next door to the property while, when they were explaining, they said it's a mix of single-family homes and townhomes, but a lot of those townhomes are probably fairly recent. When I was looking to buy my first home, which I did 10 years ago, I was looking for a particular school district, but one that I could afford, and I found Fig. And what I love is that while it is flavorful in people, it's flavorful in architecture. They were all single-family homes. It was really just very nice to see all the diversity in all areas. I'm not, nor is it in my, nor should I, try to block progress. That is not at all what this is about. Some things have gone up recently in the area that are very different than the other architecture, just real recently from the same developer, I believe, 2411, Catticore across the street. They put two big, what looks like two big homes, but they're four units, and they're three-bedroom, two-bath. My concern is, those are, I'm guessing, the 16, room 16, because of the three-bedroom, is that there would be adequate parking. The things that I think maybe could be addressed here. I can't change the landscape. It's changing. You know, we were all pretty single stories. Now things are going up to look very different, but I digress. They have, it looks like, across the street, what I hope would be adequate parking, because if there's three bedrooms and they're renting, they could possibly be, you know, students. There are some UT students that have rented some of the bungalows next to us and things. That's fine. Parking just would be an issue. It's not the widest street, and if you're parking in the street, especially on a corner, it could be a real safety issue. So my concern would be that there would be adequate parking built in on the property. Like, it appears at 2411, at least, it looks like there's four garages, and then parking for two cars between. But if they're going to 18, room 18, like I said, I'm a novice, I'm guessing that would be four bedrooms per unit, which could be the possibility of 16 cars. You know, if you have three bedrooms and everyone's driving, especially if they're students and they're renting, you know, across the street, you're looking at 12 cars. If it's 18, would that be an extra bedroom? So...
It's not rooms 16 or 18. It's a, RM is a zoning category, just to be clear.
Okay, so, so, okay.
It doesn't mean there's a number of rooms.
Okay, okay, good, good, good. Okay, like I said, novice. But the other one is, there are 12 bedrooms on the other one, so I'm guessing at least 12 there. So as long as there's adequate parking there, I mean, I think that's something that maybe can be addressed, maybe can't, but I would hope that it would be part of the plan to actually have adequate parking available on the site itself. Like I said, it is at a corner, and the streets are narrow, and if there's parking on the street, it could definitely be a safety hazard. The other thing would be, there's...
Now, your time is up. The red light mean your time is up.
Okay. Trees, do we care about trees on the property at all?
Your time, your time is up.
Nine trees? No?
Red light mean your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else who should speak on item number four? All right, the applicant?
Yes, sir, to address the comments that the neighbor indicated she had concerns about. Typically, you have to have a two-car garage, and you have to have space in the driveway for two additional cars, because you have to meet the technical standards for transportation, for the backup space. So each one of these will have to comply with the code, and there can't be any waivers for stormwater. And if there are tree issues to be addressed, we have to go through the Natural Resources Department and meet the code requirements for them as well. And that includes any removal and replacement of trees on the site. So they will all have to be addressed in the permitting process, and you can't build anything without addressing the transportation, the stormwater, and the tree and Natural Resources Tree Code. So I respectfully request your approval, again, as city staff and planning commission both found it consistent.
Just to be clear for the comment that we heard, you are going to have to comply with all the zoning regulations, provide adequate parking, or you'll have to come back to City Council to ask for a waiver, correct?
We would have to file a new application, which would be a plan development, to show you exactly what we were requesting waivers for. We're not anticipating that. We believe that we have sufficient space to meet all the code requirements without those waivers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment or question from council? All right, anything else, the applicant?
No, sir. Unless you have questions for me.
Do the motion close? All right, most of them, Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Miranda. All in favor, let the motion say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Mr. Cohen, you're going to read item number four?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 2502 West Fig Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification RM 16, residential multifamily, to RM 18 residential multifamily, providing an effective date.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor, let the motion say aye.
Aye.
The opposed?
Thank you, Council.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption to be held on March 7, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Okay, all right, go to item number five.
Mary Saminiego, for the record. Item number five is REZ 1902. It's for the property generally located at 6209 South Third Street, from RS 60 to RS 50.
Good evening, Councilmembers. David Hay again with your planning commission staff. I have been sworn, we move back down to the South Tampa Planning District for this next case, more specifically the Ballast Point Neighborhood. The subject, the closest public recreation facility is Skyview Park, which is about 420 feet southwest of the site. There is transit down in the... There is transit down in that end of the city, at Dale Mayberry and Inner Bay, and then it is within a Level A evacuation zone, which also means that it's in the coastal high-hazard area. Onto the aerial, again, the zoomed-out one. This is the subject site right here. This is South Third Street. It dead-ends into the Pavilion's apartment complex down there on McDill. You could see the majority of this area is all single-family detached, except for the apartment community. Across, this is McDill, Inner Bay, this is Skyview Park, and then this is actually the ELAP property down in South Tampa. Onto the future land use map. The subject site and all the properties on South Third Street and the surrounding area in that, I guess, tan color, is residential ten. It gets a little more dense as you move toward McDill. The properties on McDill are residential twenty. This represents, the green represents the recreation open space, Skyview Park and the ELAP. And then the commercial area is located at Inner Bay and McDill. That's the community mixed-use thirty-five, future land use category. You all are well aware, the comprehensive plan promotes an adequate supply of housing within the city. With the ability to meet the needs, preferences, and financial capabilities of a range of citizens, the applicant complains to construct two single-family detached houses, furthering one of the plan's primary housing policies. It would, the site, since it is a larger site than what is currently found in that portion of that neighborhood, it is underutilized under that residential ten, and this would bring the density and more compliance to the development pattern around it. It is within that coastal high-hazard area, as stated previously, and the applicant should work with the city in ensuring that any mitigation that's required for shelter space is handled. And based on all that, planning commission staff finds the rezoning request consistent with the Tampa comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Mary Saminiego for the record. This is a rezoning request, it's a Euclidian rezoning request from RS sixty to RS fifty, to allow for the ultimate creation of two single-family lots, based on the RS fifty zoning standards. There is already RS fifty to the north. On the north side of West Bay Avenue, there's a large multifamily plan development to the south. There's some commercial neighborhood and multifamily zoning to the direct west of this small neighborhood on McDill Avenue. Whenever we do this type of analysis, we look at the development pattern of the surrounding area. This is all already, this area is not considered, it's RS fifty already. This is a commercial area, and this is all multifamily or townhome developments. So really, I just looked at this immediate area. Of the total of thirty-six lots that were in the study area, fifty-eight percent were larger than sixty feet or equal to or larger than sixty feet wide of the subject block. Sixty-two percent were larger or equal to sixty feet wide, and the remaining thirty-eight percent were less than sixty feet wide. On the block face, twenty-five percent were, or just one, is larger than sixty feet in width. And then for the sixty-two hundred block, eighty-three percent were smaller than the sixty feet wide. So based on all those numbers, and if you just look at the development pattern in this immediate area, creating the two RS fifty lots appears to be compatible with the immediate area. Saying that, there's no site plan to review, and therefore, there are no waivers, and the development review found this consistent with the land development code.
Okay, any questions for staff? All right, applicant?
Good evening, council. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner for sixty-two oh nine Third Street, and as the staff has pointed out, both the planning commission and the city staff found it to be consistent. If you noticed on the map that Mary showed you just a minute ago, the two properties immediately to the north, and all of the properties directly across the street from this requested rezoning are all fifty-foot lots, and the ones that further south, you have townhouses, you have commercial properties, and a huge tract of land immediately to the north, which is all fifty-foot lots. This was originally planted in nineteen twenty-two, and our request is to restore the original plat and to go back and build two single-family homes on each of these individual lots. This area has undergone a great deal of new investment and infill development, and as you may recall, both the planning commission and the city requirements are that you can only do that where you have existing utilities for water, sewer, transportation, schools, and we've met all of that criteria. So we'd respectfully request your approval.
All right, any questions for the applicant? All right, anyone in the public which should speak on item number five? Can the motion close?
Second.
Got most of them, Mr. Moran, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
The call. All right, Mr. Maniscalco, will you read number five?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of sixty-two oh nine South Third Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification RS sixty residential single-family to RS fifty residential single-family, providing an effective date.
Second. Got most of them, Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Moran, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
The call.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption to be held on March seventh, two thousand nineteen, at nine-thirty a.m.
Thank you, council.
Okay, go to item number six.
Mary Saminiego, item number six is REZ nineteen fourteen. It's for the property generally located at sixty-nine fifteen East Broadway Avenue, from commercial intensive and heavy industrial to heavy industrial.
Good evening, council members. David Hay, planning commission staff. I have been sworn, we're in the central Tampa Planning District for this next case. The subject site, there is transit out there, so workers can get to this site. Hart Route Eight serves this portion of Broadway. Here we have an aerial, the subject site. You could see, south of Broadway, it's almost all industrial in nature. There is some commercial along Broadway, and then you go into unincorporated county further off of this portion of Broadway. There's a mix of uses and stuff in the county, but the city is predominantly all industrial. The future land use map backs that up. All the, this dark black color is the heavy industrial. This kind of reddish color, that's that transitional use twenty-four, so that allows that combination of residential, commercial, and industrial uses. The land use is heavy industrial. It's consistent with that underlying future land use category, the zoning. This portion of East Broadway is developed primarily with those industrial uses, so the use would be comparable and compatible. The Tampa's comprehensive plan supports the intensification of its industrial warehousing and distribution facilities. The industrial areas in the city must be preserved and intensified to strengthen Tampa's role as a regional economic center. Rezoning the subject site to an industrial heavy zoning district furthers this policy direction in the comprehensive plan. Approving the request would stimulate growth in the industrial sector of the area and is consistent with the comp plan. And based on that, all that considerations, the staff recommends to you this evening that this is not consistent with the Tampa comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mary Saminiego. Here is an aerial of the subject property. As you can see, it's industrial use. Here is the zoning map. As you can see, the subject property is in green, and there is a swath of commercial intensive zoning that's currently along Broadway Avenue. The subject property is split between the northern half is commercial intensive and the southern half is heavy industrial. Due to the nature of the current property owner's use, he would like the entire property to be heavy industrial, so he can fully exercise all of his business activity throughout his entire site, instead of having to be cognizant and aware of the differentiation between those two zoning lines and what activities can and cannot occur in the middle of his yard. The surrounding area is a mix of some commercial intensive uses. There's a gas station right here, but overwhelming majority of this area is significant industrial If this property were to be completely rezoned to cover the entire heavy industrial zoning district, all activity would have to comply with that zoning district standards. There's no site plan to submit and no waivers, and the development review and compliance staff found this consistent with the land development code.
Questions for staff? Yeah, questions?
Good evening, Kevin Reali, one hundred South Ashley Drive, here for the applicant. I have a presentation to submit. The clerk? And there are copies there for other council members if they want to view the photographs, but I'll put up what's necessary. A portion of my presentation duplicates what was already presented, so I'll go through that very quickly, just briefly here. We're the, the property is in the east side of the city, in a heavy industrial area, and an overview of the goals here is to avoid bifurcated zoning. This rezoning is contiguous with the heavy industrial to the south, and the neighboring uses are compatible, and the heavy industrial use would actually be more consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. Again, the bifurcated zoning, this was already discussed by the staff, and then also discussed. But important here, the comp plan, the future land use map here shows that the whole area here to south of Broadway is set out to be heavy industrial by the comprehensive plan. I think important for this application is to look at the neighboring uses. This is across Broadway to the north, clearly very heavy industrial, and lots of open storage and industrial uses. To the east, some open space, and then a commercial gas station. To the west, some more industrial, and then some commercial uses on the north side of Broadway, and then here on the south side of Broadway, the neighboring property is also open storage and industrial use. Then quickly, the property itself, the aerial we've already shown, but if you can see the property itself, the stacking right now is done to the back of the property there, and limits the amount of space available to the applicant to use the property. So to get to, the purpose of the application here is primarily stacking height. The applicant runs a pallet business. A portion of that business is brokering pallets, another portion is repairing or recycling if the pallets cannot be repaired. And depending on the current state of the business, there could be a lot of inventory on-site or minimal inventory. When there's a lot of inventory, the height for stacking is limited to six feet, and six feet obviously not very high, and that limits the applicant's space to functionally use the northern part of the property. This is true in all zoning districts except for heavy industrial. In the heavy industrial district, the land development code allows for higher stacking heights depending on setbacks and buffering. It could be as high as forty feet, but typically, it would be somewhere in the ten to twenty-foot range. In justification, as stated, this is consistent, continuous, or contiguous and compatible with neighboring uses, but more importantly, the comprehensive plan sets this out to be a heavy industrial area, and the land development code encourages heavy industrial in those areas that the comprehensive plan has set out for heavy industrial. And uses in heavy industrial are meant to be those uses that are not compatible with primary commercial, institutional, and residential uses, and since the primary reason that the applicant seeks this is to be able to stack, and stacking is only allowed in a heavy industrial zoning, that seems to comply with the land development code. I don't need to put up the other slides. This is consistent and recommended by staff and the planning commission, and we respectfully request approval. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Anyone in the public which should speak on item number six? Move to close.
Second.
Most of them, Mr. Moran, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
The call. Ms. Copine, would you read item number six?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of six-nine-one-five East Broadway Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification C one, commercial intensive to I one, industrial heavy to I, I mean, I'm sorry, IH industrial heavy to IH industrial heavy, providing an effective date.
Right, most of them, Ms. Copine, second by Mr. Moran, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
The call.
Motion carried with Suarez abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on March seventh, two thousand nineteen, at nine-thirty a.m.
Okay, item number seven.
Mary Saminiego, item number seven is REZ eighteen-one-twenty-five. It's a rezoning request for the property at eleven-twenty and twelve-zero-eight East Kennedy Boulevard, from Channel District Two to Channel District Two, multifamily residential, retail, office, and all CD two uses.
Good evening, council members. David Hay, planning commission staff. I have been sworn, we're in the central Tampa Planning District, more specifically, the Channel District Urban Village. That area is within the city's central business district periphery that allows additional density above the RME one hundred. East Kennedy Boulevard is a transit emphasis corridor, and a small portion of the subject site is within the coastal high-hazard area. The majority of the site is in a Level B evacuation zone. The nearest transit is at, that's bus, at Kennedy and North Twelfth Street. It's also within proximity to the streetcar line. Onto the aerial. This is the subject site. This is Kennedy, Meridian, Channel Side Drive. This is the Grand Central Development. There's the Crosstown Union Station. The area, we're all familiar with it, it's a lot of multifamily in that particular area. Onto the future land use map. The subject site and all this kind of reddish color is that regional mixed-use one hundred, the most intensive category outside of downtown. There's still some scattered heavy industrial parcels on the north side of the Channel District. Once you cross those tracks and the Meridian Avenue corridor, you get into the CBD, which is this brown color, and there's some community mixed-use thirty-five up near Union Station. The applicant is requesting approval in this petition to convert three thousand one hundred and fifty square feet of loading dock space into office space. The request is part of a rezoning for the Grand Central Project, in which it has a mix already of residential, office, this commercial uses. Originally, there was supposed to be a grocery store also within that development. However, the anchor tenant for that grocery store did not locate in Grand Central Complex's plan. Therefore, the applicant is requesting for approval to convert the loading docks that were designed for that grocery store into office space. Planning commission staff concludes that approving the applicant's request will be compatible with the mixture of uses found not only within the development, but within the surrounding area. And based on that, planning commission staff recommends to you this evening that this be found consistent with the Tampa comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination. As David stated, this is the Grand Central existing development. The only thing that's proposing to be changed is two of the loading docks will be converted into a little over thirty-one hundred square feet of office space. Nothing else is proposed to change with the site. It's CD two, it came before you several years ago, it's back again. The only reason why it's back before you today is because they have to ask for one additional waiver than, beyond the waivers that were previously approved, to reduce the total off-street loading spaces for the entire development from five spaces down to three. The elimination of those two loading spaces will be where the new office suites will be. Here is the subject property. As David said, it's in the Channel Side District with a smattering of... As David said, it's in the Channel Side District with a smattering of different uses that have already occurred there. Here is the site plan. Existing Channel Side Development. The only thing that is changing is these two loading spaces, which the applicant will state aren't used, will be converted to additional office space. And again, the reason why we're before you is to get that waiver. There are a couple small changes between first and second reading that you'll see in your, the revision sheet of the staff report that I'll remind you to make as part of your motion. Overall, the development review and compliance staff did find this inconsistent through transportation because of the waiver to the loading berth going down from five to three. Other than that, if it is pleasure to approve, the pleasure of council to approve this amendment, again, there are revisions between first and second reading.
Not necessary, because the store's not coming in, the grocery store, so it's really, in essence, yes, there's a change, but yes, there's no change because the grocery store's not there.
Yes. However, based on the overall projects, five are still required. But I think, I can't speak for the applicant, but I think what they're saying is that they have five, they never use the five.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, applicant?
Good evening, Councilwoman Andy May, it's Gray Robinson, 401 East Jackson Street. I have been sworn. And Councilwoman Miranda, you're exactly correct. The intended use was that hopefully a grocery store is going to come to this parcel. It did not. That's the bad news. The good news is it is coming across the street and it's going in there. So at the time, there were dedicated bays that would allow eighteen-wheelers, large truck and, you know, horse and trailer type operation to go in and unload. There are still sufficient spaces to allow multiple move-ins and outs to happen with, within the space, and those bays that were going to be used for the intended grocery store don't allow residents to move in and out because there's, there's structural interference between those bays and where they would have to get to, to move in and out of units. So essentially, the intended use change, as a result, we had space there that was originally designed for that intended use, which now cannot be used. So we're asking y'all's approval to convert that into additional office space. We've had a nice tenant come in there, and, and so they want more space, and that's what we're trying to accommodate. And that's the additional waiver from five to three, which necessitated this petition. It's consistent, compatible, we'd ask your approval.
Any question for the applicant? Anyone in the public wish to speak on item number seven?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Manaschakal, all in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, Mr. Miranda, would you read?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, move item number seven, file number REZ 18-125. Orders being presented for first reading consideration, orders rezoning property in general vicinity of 1120 and 11, excuse me, and 1208 East Kennedy Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification CD2, Channel District to CD2, Channel District, providing an effective date.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Beher. All in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Motion carried with Koppin abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on March 7th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
All right, move item eight.
Thanks. Happy Valentine's Day. Don't forget to get flowers.
Mary Saminiego, REZ 1903, property located at 720 West Columbus Drive from RS60 to plan development for attached, single-family residential.
Good evening, council members. David Hay with your planning commission staff. I have been sworn, we're in the central Tampa Planning District for this next case, more specifically the Ridgewood Park neighborhood. The closest public transit stop is located approximately 250 feet to the west along West Columbus Drive, and that stop is served by Hart Route 15, which connects the subject site to West Shore and the East Tampa's area, and also the Net Park Transfer Center. The subject site is located within the Level C evacuation zone, and the closest public recreation facility, Phillips Park, is located approximately 250 feet walking distance to the west of the subject site. Onto the aerial, this is the zoomed out one, Mary will have a more zoomed in. This map, there's a slight error in it. It's only this parcel. It does not include the parcel right at the corner. They're correcting that at the, back at the PC. But to the south and to the west of this subject site, it's all single-family detached, maybe one or two older duplexes, but predominantly single-family detached. This is directly south, there's a convenience store with a little shopping plaza, they're turning, they're installing gas pumps at that corner, but this is a little node of light commercial activity occurring. Also, to the south, you can see the Heights Project, this is the Pearl down there, and of course, the river to the west. Onto the future land use map. Again, it's only this parcel. That parcel and all the parcels to the west and south are all that residential 10. Immediately to the east of the subject site, in this area, that's that community mixed use 35, similar to what's found really to the north and to the west, to the east of this intersection. Again, all residential 10. It gets up to residential 35, south of Columbus, east of North Boulevard, and then down in the Heights, it actually gets up to RME 100, and then there's some residential 20. This is the Villa Madonna School, by the way, public quasi-public. The city's comprehensive plan encourages the development of a variety of housing types to meet the needs of the present and future projected population. The subject site is located along West Columbus Drive, which is classified as an arterial roadway. The site is also adjacent to those commercial uses as described previously. Staff finds that the request for semi-attached multi-family units is consistent with the surrounding development pattern. Typically, single-family attached residential uses are not permitted in areas designated as residential 10. However, Land Use Policy 9.3.5 allows for consideration of single-family attached residential development when located to the periphery of an established single-family neighborhood, similar to a site like this that's right next to commercial uses. The comprehensive plan is also supportive of residential infill within proximity to transit, employment, and recreational amenities. The subject site is within proximity to transit service and employment centers downtown and Phillips Park for the recreation. The proposed rezoning is comparable and compatible with the long-range development patterns expected in this portion of the Ridgewood Park neighborhood, and will provide for an appropriate transition of intensity between the commercial uses at the intersection of North Boulevard and West Columbus, and the single-family detached development to the south and west of the subject site. Based on those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development consistent with the provisions of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination. Here is the subject property, is currently in the RS60 zoning district. They're requesting a plan development for three townhomes, which are attached, single-family residential. As David stated, this is kind of on the very edge of this larger subdivision. The intersection of Columbus and North Boulevard has some retail and office uses currently. The subject property is currently vacant. This is what the applicant is proposing, three townhomes facing Columbus Drives with sidewalks leading up to Columbus, and the required parking in the back as well as within garages. There are a number of trees on-site that will be preserved with this PD site plan. There are no waivers being requested, so they're in full compliance with the standard code provisions for this type of development. There are some changes between first and second reading that are required by staff. I will make one note for the record on the revision page, which is sheet nine, I'm sorry, page nine of the staff report, the first bullet of transportation regarding the calculation for guest parking. That amendment needs to be stricken. That was an error in the report, so that requirement is not needed as a change. So if you approve this application, staff would recommend saying with the revision sheet as amended by Mary Saminiego. Other than that, I know the applicant will discuss the case. There are minor changes between first and second reading, but again, with no waivers, the land development, or I'm sorry, the development review and compliance staff found this consistent with the city of Tampa land development code.
Any questions from council?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Chair, that same parking requirement is also on bullet number three. That should be also stricken, I want to make sure. It's on page two, but bullet number three, under general requirements.
Oh, the staff report?
Yeah.
Right, but the revision sheet is the actual document.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because you've got them in two slots there.
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Real quick. The property that's right there on the corner of Boulevard and Columbus, that's not affected or demolished or has anything to do with this, right?
Uh-uh, no, not at the corner. It's next door to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Applicant?
Good evening, council. For the record, my name is Ty Maxi, representing the applicant. This is an infill lot, just to give you an idea, very, very quickly. How's this thing out? So it's an infill lot, very small lot, with the residential 10 land use category. We're proposing three attached townhome, single-family units. We've talked with a few of the neighbors. I think we have their full support, probably judging by the fact that no one else is here. With that, I'll answer any questions.
All right, any question for the applicant?
Not regarding the applicant. Did you gentlemen do the one across the street just to the south, I mean northwest?
Yes, they did. They did.
That looked very nice.
The big tall three-story.
All right, anyone in the public wish to speak on item number eight?
Hi, my name's Tony Monk. I live at 2507 North Glenwood. We're the immediate neighbor to the west, and I've also can speak on behalf of the neighborhood. We did communicate about the meeting tonight and shared the documents that the developer provided, and none of our neighbors in our association, our little group, issued any comments, so there were no objections or complaints. As the immediate neighbor, we're generally supportive of the development. It's better than a vacant lot. As an urban designer, that's the bear trap you step in, you didn't know your neighbor was an urban designer. It's not great urban design for the city of Tampa. We're not going to create vibrant, walkable, equitable communities at three to four parking spaces per unit. There's just a lot of land given to parking. It could be denser. Of course, we can't force a developer to do something denser, and I agree with what David said and what Mary said. It is consistent and compliant with the plans we have in place now, but I think we might need to revisit, when we have the opportunity, those plans. Perhaps the creation of a Citizens Urban Design Committee to get some input from the citizenry, because this is a great neighborhood to be denser, to get down to one space per unit, eliminate parking requirements altogether, have something more walkable. The folks who are going to live here are going to want to live here because they can walk to Armature Works and the Heights and all that, and there's only so many Vennix and Heights and Midtown Developments to go around. We have to start making some hay, no container, we have to start making some hay on these smaller developments. How can we make more use out of our land? If we keep designing for cars, we're going to keep getting cars. If we design for people, we're going to get higher-quality neighborhoods, and we're going to have opportunities. I see on this site where behind it, you have to address, you know, the nicer neighborhoods, they're going to want to be on the street, have your presence on the street. There's all this space on the back of the property. That's where you can put affordable housing, smaller units. You can really meet the land use, the comp plan objectives of having a variety of housing. So we're generally supportive. If we have any technical concerns, we'll take those up with staff. I think that anything that we might be concerned about can certainly be addressed, and in the quick view I saw of the updated plan, they've already addressed some of our concerns. So we're generally pleased, they've reached out to us. We just like see a little more progress from our city and from our comp plan. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on item number eight?
Move to close.
Petition? Petition? You want, you have a chance to respond.
Yeah, nothing further. I mean, we are limited by...
State your name for the record.
Oh, for the record, Ty Maxi. We are limited by the residential 10 land use category. The maximum number of units that we can put on this property is three, so we actually have a lot of open space on this property. We'd certainly love to put more if we could, but three fit nicely, and three is, of course, are consistent, is consistent with the comprehensive future land use plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Miranda, your motion?
Move to close. I mean, yeah, the hearing.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Manaschakal, all in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, Mr. Beher, would you read item number eight?
Yes, sir. I will, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration and ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 720 West Columbus Drive in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS60 residential, single-family to PD plan development residential, single-family attached, providing an effective date with the aforementioned revision sheet.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Mr. Beher, second by Mr. Manaschakal, all in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption to be held on March 7th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Are you chairing? Okay. Sorry. Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination, REZ 1904. It's a rezoning request for the property generally located at 503 Southwestland Avenue from RM16 to plan development for multi-family residential.
Good evening, council members. David Hay with your planning commission staff. I have been sworn, we're still in that central Tampa Planning District, more specifically the Courier City Oskowana neighborhood. These, those two transit stops are located within two-tenths of a mile from the subject site. The closest public recreation facility, it's within 1,200 feet, it's Hyde Park, and the subject site is within a Level C evacuation zone. Onto the aerial. Here's the subject site. We're all familiar with this area. There's a lot of townhome development occurring. There's not many single-family detached units left in here. This is the Soho, Post Soho Square, this is the Windexy down on Swan, this is Howard, this is Westland, of course, this is the Selman. You have Armenia further to the west, and Mary will have a, probably a blow-up with that. Here we have the future land use map. The subject site and all these properties in the brown are their residential 35. Immediately to the west, parcels fronting along Howard Avenue are the community mixed use 35. The bright red is the CC 35, and then the green is the public recreation open space. The yellow, of course, is RES6, and then you also get a pocket of RES50 actually over at the other post apartments over near the Selman crosstown. The proposed project is an area with a mixture of housing types and styles. The city's comprehensive plan encourages the development and retention of a variety of housing types to meet the needs of its present and future populations. The comprehensive plan also encourages that the design and development of new single-family attached and multi-family residential buildings have front doors that are oriented to a neighborhood sidewalk or street. On the site plan that Planning Commission reviewed, Unit 2 and 3 have doors on the side of the proposed structure. Typically, when placing units entrances on the side of the structure, a sidewalk is provided, which connects to the public sidewalk along an adjacent public right-of-way. The sidewalk provided on the proposed site plan does not connect to the public sidewalk, instead connecting to Unit 1 and 4's driveway. To comply with comprehensive plan policy, Planning Commission staff would recommend that the internal sidewalk be adjusted between first and second reading to connect to the public sidewalk along West, Southwestland Avenue, and not to the other units' driveways. The existing density with one residential unit on the subject site is 5.5 units per acre. If the rezon- If the rezoning is approved, the applicant could build a maximum of four residential units on site, and the proposed density would increase to 22.2 units per acre. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan future land use designation of residential thirty-five, which allows an overall density of up to 35 units per acre. It is also comparable and compatible with the surrounding development pattern. Currently, parcels adjacent to Southwestland Avenue between West Horatio Street and West Dillon Street are built at an overall density of 30.9 units per acre. Proposed four single-family attached residential units would be of a similar form, height, and scale of the surrounding residential uses, and would not alter the character or physical development pattern of this portion of the Courier City Oskowana neighborhood. Based on those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development consistent with the provisions of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, with the note regarding the sidewalk adjustment between first and second reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination. Here is the subject property. It is in green. We're in that Courier Oskowana area. The existing zoning is RM sixteen. They're asking for a planned development to develop four townhome units. As you can see, and as I know all of you are familiar, this area has seen a series of rezonings to convert the historic single-family neighborhood over to allow four townhome and apartment developments. Here is the site plan the applicant is proposing. Two of the units will face Westland, the other two will face the required improved We've seen a similar layout from this applicant before. The only waiver that's being requested and required is to allow the two back units to have doors on the sides as opposed to facing a public right-of-way. I did discuss the sidewalk situation with Mr. Hay prior to issuing the staff report, and I have made a requirement that for, as example, these are mirror images, for this door, the sidewalk will go like this, and then his concern was that you have to walk through the driveway to get to the public sidewalk. I've made it on the revision sheet a requirement that between first and second reading, they show a sidewalk connection in this area, as well as in this area, to connect the front doors all the way to a public sidewalk without having to traverse through someone else's driveway. So that's already been incorporated into the revision sheet. Other revisions are just a couple minor technical calculations from land development. All the other departments found it consistent with the Land Development Code and had no further revisions. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Matthew Campo, Campo Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. Available for any questions. One thing, we have no objection to the requests that have been made for the site plan changes.
Anyone in the public wish to speak on item number nine?
Motion to close.
Second. All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, seconded by Mr. Corn. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Suarez, item number nine.
Thank you, Chair. I present an ordinance for first reading consideration and ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 503 Southwestland Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, RM sixteen residential multifamily, to PD plan development residential multifamily, providing an effective date and including the revisions as stated by staff concerning the sidewalks.
I got a motion from Ms. Suarez, seconded by Mr. Beer. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption to be held on March 7th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
All right, go item number 10.
Okay, last item on the agenda, it's Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination, REZ 1906, for the property located at 3625 West Azalee Street, from plan development to plan development for medical office and all RO1 uses.
Good evening, council members. David Hay again with your Planning Commission staff. Our last case, we end up in the central Tampa Planning District, more specifically the Bon Air neighborhood. The subject site, there is public transit within the area. Harps Route 36 serves the area on South Del Mayberry, and the subject site is within a Level C evacuation zone. Onto the aerial, here's the subject site. This is Azalee, and here's Himes, it's west of Himes. It's hard to see with this aerial, but there's a lot of small little offices along this stretch of Azalee, and then right behind them, there's single-family detached, both to the north and the south. This is Del Mayberry. This is the Lifestyle Fitness Center here with this big roof, but we all are familiar with the commercial development out here. Further to the east, to the south side of Azalee, it's a lot of multifamily, while to the north, it's all single-family until you get to Henderson Boulevard to the east. Onto the future land use map, you can see the subject site and all the parcels fronting this portion of Azalee are all that residential twenty, and then immediately behind on either side, it goes down to the residential ten. It leads out to the community mixed-use thirty-five, found along in this lavender color out on South Del Mayberry, and then if you continue further east down Azalee, the multifamily in this brown is RES thirty-five, and again, more community mixed-use thirty-five out on Henderson Avenue. Kennedy's further to the north with the UMU sixty. The applicant is requesting approval through this rezoning petition to modify a vacant residential building to allow for medical, business, and professional office under and RO1 uses in the building. The proposed uses in the building would not have any negative impacts on existing residential uses adjacent to the site. Additionally, the medical business, the medical office requested by the applicant in the building is comparable and compatible with the uses and development pattern along this portion of West Azalee Street. And since it is in R twenty, the subject site does meet commercial locational criteria for non-residential uses. So based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development consistent with the provisions of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination. Before I get started, I amended staff report. I'll explain it. I'll explain it. It's fine. I'll explain it.
It's fine, calm down.
It's fine. The subject property is currently RO1. On West Azalee Street, it's a block off of South Sterling Avenue. As David said, there's a kind of a smattering of small office buildings that are kind of residential in character and scale. The subject, the applicant is proposing all RO1 uses, including medical office. Here is the, nothing is changing on the site plan based on the amended staff report for one. The applicant is proposing a total building to allow, again, for all uses, 8100 square feet total. The building is here with some parking underneath it, and then the remaining parking is surface parking. Here are the building elevations. So you can see that the building at different elevations, and then there would be some parking underneath it, as shown here. As far as buffers and waivers, they're asking for a waiver to the north, used-to-use buffer from 15 feet with a six-foot-high wall to six feet with a seven-foot-high vinyl fence. Similarly, on the east side, they're asking for, instead of a 15-foot, I'm sorry, a 15-foot buffer with a six-foot-high wall, they're asking for a five-foot buffer with a six-foot-high vinyl fence. Staff thought that was appropriate. As far as the changes, when the staff report went out, the applicant was proposing the entire site was to be allowed for consideration for medical office. This resulted in a 31% parking reduction, which staff, being land development and transportation both, found inconsistent. After the staff report came out, the applicant approached staff and said, what if we reduced the percentage of medical office in the building to 50%? That is reflected in this amended staff report. So only a maximum 50% of the building can be used for medical office, and the remaining 50% would be for business professional office. This results in, instead of a 31% parking reduction waiver, down to only an 8% parking reduction waiver, which in practical terms, are required 37 spots, they're waiving it down to 34. Staff still has an objection, or I don't want to say objection, inconsistency to the parking reduction overall, but obviously, an 8% reduction is more consistent than a 31% reduction. Other waivers, as opposed to a 24-foot drive-al width, are proposing 22 feet and a backup depth. One of the locations, instead of a six-foot backup, they're only providing a five. I know the applicant will go through the proposal in more detail. If this is approved, there are changes between first and second reading, as reflected in the amended staff report and the amended revision sheet from land development and natural resources. So basically, overall, the project seems consistent, however, because of the technical waiver to parking in association with the medical office use, land development and transportation did find this inconsistent.
Any question from counsel?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, question.
You're welcome.
Ralph Schuler, I have not been sworn.
All right, anybody else with you? Have not sworn?
Joseph Aluchia? I do. Thank you. Ralph Schuler, JBB Architects, 1719 North Howard. I am the, we are the authorized agent. So in DRC, we had some discussions, and that's how we kind of got confused on what to ask for, on what we wanted to provide in way of parking and/or the use. The primary use is going to be for Mr. Valiente, his office on the third floor. He's an accountant. He will occupy the entire third floor. So there will be no medical on the third floor, and the second floor is vacant currently. It's going to be leased, and we want to have the option to put medical there, but really don't really know what's going to go there. We think we have sufficient parking to allow that. We're going from 37 required to 34 is what we provide, and I'll show you the, let's see here, this is a rendering of what we're going to propose. Again, the first floor is really just parking. It was a very, very small lobby in the corner here. Then the entire second floor would be currently an unknown use, and then the third floor is going to be Mr. Valiente's office, professional office space. We think we have an attractive project. We think it fits within the development standards of the neighborhood, and I think Azalee is going to continue to mature into a professional office corridor, and we think this would be a great contributing part to the neighborhood. I'll take questions.
All right, any question from counsel?
Is this being built right next door to the beauty salon?
Yes, yes. Actually, we have some of those owners here today.
Okay.
Any other questions from counsel? Anyone in the public wish to speak on item number 10?
Motion to close.
Second.
We got a motion from Mr. Miranda, seconded by Ms. Capone. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, go to Mr. Corn with item number 10.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration.
Chairman, just for the record, I see some eyebrows dropping down. The public is here, but I think they're all from the same unit, unless I'm confused.
Do any of you wish to speak? That's what we was trying to get to.
Yeah?
I move to open the hearing. Hearing 10, REZ 19-06.
We got a motion from Mr. Miranda, seconded by Mr. Maniscalco. We open the hearing. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Candido Lano.
All right, identify your name.
On the building with my partner Roberto Gandaria, and we are delighted these people is going to build such a wonderful building.
Okay.
All right, take one at a time, and please state your name, and have you been sworn?
No, not yet. Have you been sworn? I'm sorry, I can't understand.
Have you been sworn in?
No.
Please, we're going to our hand.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth? The whole truth, you got the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Now you may speak.
No, I see your name.
Okay. Candido Lano, Roberto Gandaria, we own the building next to the chairman, and we are very happy that he's going to have...
Did you say your name? Did you state your name? He did? Okay, oh, I can understand.
His name is Candido Lano. Candido Lano, L-A-N-O, and my name is Robert Yandarilla.
Thank you.
And we're the owners of Sierra La Mansión, right next door, and we're very pleased to have this building going up. It's going to add value, and aesthetically, going to raise the look of Azalee. There are other buildings on Azalee as well that I think has freshened up the look of it, and I feel it's going to be a valuable asset to our property as well.
We both think it would be a wonderful thing for our neighborhood.
All right, anything else? Anything else you want to say?
That's it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Corn, seconded by Mr. Miranda. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Corn.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration and ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3625 West Azalee Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, PD plan development, retail office, multifamily, personal services, to PD plan development, office, medical, and all RO1 uses, providing an effective date. And including the revision sheet.
On the amended report.
On the amended report.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Corn, seconded by Mr. Maniscalco. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption to be held on March 7th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
All right, go to the information report, Mr. Suarez.
Thanks, Barry.
Happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Mr. Maniscalco.
No.
Ms. Capone.
Yes, sir. At the March 21 meeting, on the March 21, 2019 meeting, a 9:00 a.m. city council meeting, I would like to have the staff give an update on the status of the AER tower across from the Stroud Center, including construction and finance.
Second.
All right.
Wait a second.
March 21 at 9:00 a.m.
We got a motion from Ms. Capone, seconded by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Miranda.
I got three of them, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion for a presentation accommodation to Gloria Moreta, who is retiring after 35 years of service to the City of Tampa. I would like to present the accommodation on April 4th, 2019.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Miranda, seconded by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to present accommodation to the winners of the American League Annual Oratorical Contest at Barry's Post. These students are competing by demonstrating their keen interest and appreciation for the Constitution of the United States. This accommodation would be presented in the evening meeting at February 28, 2019.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Miranda, seconded by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to provide accommodation posthumously to Mr. Doug Pierce, a longtime employer of the Parks and Recreation Forestry Division. The accommodation will be presented either Thursday, February 28, 2019, or March 7, 2019, awaiting for the decision of the family.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Miranda, seconded by Mr. Corn. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, that's it.
All right, Ms. Capone.
Nothing, sir.
All right, motion received, fine.
So moved.
All right, we got a motion, a motion from Ms. Capone, seconded by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, the standard, Jerry.
Here goes, sir.
That's your motion.